Is called to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Dr. Rowland.
All right, Mrs. Kolikowski.
Present.
Mr. Sterling.
Present.
Mrs. Snyder.
Present.
Mr. Shaner.
Present.
Mrs. Kulp. Mrs. Ralph.
Present.
Mrs. Halter. Mrs. Melier.
Present.
Mrs. Kammer.
Present.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Rowland, please lead us through your report.
Yes, Madam Vice President, the first thing I'd like to do is introduce our student representative, Mr. Micah Timmons, to give the student's report.
Hi, everyone. So, going on so far, our best buddies, they did a polar plunge last month, and it's basically for our Unified Track Team in the Special Olympics to help raise money and awareness. They went down to Akershire Stadium, and the whole team ran and jumped into this ice cold pool of water. And our school loan raised $1,262, and in the Pittsburgh area, it was $1.2 million raised. So that was a huge success. Prom is coming up, so we started fundraising for that. We're doing a Snap Raise fundraiser where basically, it's all online. You put a bunch of emails into people who might like be interested in donating a little bit, and you have to get at least 20 emails, and this is through the junior and senior class. This money's gonna be split up to go to prom, and also it goes to make our Cedar Point trip fundable for the seniors at the end of the year. We do have one of the cheapest proms in the county. I think our ticket's the lowest right now compared to everyone else. Our Calves Lead Initiative we're doing for the second semester, Kennywood Season Passes, Sandcastle Season Passes, Venter Grove Season Passes, and a parking pass for next school year will be free to whoever wins that. Next week is our musical, so that's all going on right now. That's where I'm going after this, actually. And then just this past week, we had states wrestling. We had Mario Hutcherson, Mark Gray, Cooper Roskowsky, they all podiumed, and Ava Golding also podiumed on the girls' side. And then Swimming States will start in a few days. We have Riley Utley, Akunkel, and Justin Tucker all swimming, and that's all I have. Thank you, everybody.
So when's the prom, Micah? What the date?
April 25th.
It is the 25th, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good job, good job.
Oh, can I just chime in and say anybody that wanted to see pictures or videos of the polar plunge? They can go on to the KA Unified Track Facebook page, and they can see everything.
Okay. Are there any questions about student representative reports?
All right, the next part of the report is Jason Day from PJ Dick. He'll be presenting the construction report for the intermediate school project.
Thank you, Dr. Rowland. Work progresses over there. So Dawn gave me an update of the progress. I'll just kind of read through it. So Lyicarius, our general contractor, has Area A, which is the classroom area, about 25% of the roof is completed. They are continuing as the weather here obviously improves with the roof work. Demolition in Area A is getting close, 90%, and these are some areas where some structural work has to occur. That should be done, and the steel in Area A should be done by the end of this month. The steel in Area B, which is your kitchen and cafeteria area, is 50% complete. The large beam that spans the auditorium opening is slated to be installed by the end of this month. They're currently doing demolition of the block wall above that area as we speak. Masonry in the locker rooms is done, and they're working on the elevator shaft and starting to patch the brick exterior. The interior contractor has about 90% of the entire building reframed with the metal studs. So that's in Areas A, B, and C of the building. Drywall has commenced on the second floor area north, and then also on the south. They'll be starting drywall downstairs and the first floor here in a couple of weeks. So the activity inside the building really has picked up within the last three weeks with drywall starting. Rabel Plumbing, again, they're roughing really in Area A is done and inspected since we're starting the drywall. They are sprinkler, fire protection system is roughed in in Areas A, first and second floors. They continue in B and C. And their insulation is continuing throughout B and C as well. Legalia, who's your mechanical contractor, they have the main heating piping loop in, about 90% complete, and they've started connection to the VAV boxes on the second floor in that system. Duck work also continues in the second floor areas A, and then also in B and C. So they've gotten a lot of duck work installed in the last month. They've also continued insulation of that pipe and the duck work, and that's about 80% complete in Area A. And their control contractor has also started the control wiring roughing throughout the building. Allegheny City, the electrical contractor, has gotten back outside to finish his underground duck bank, started to clean that area up, getting rid of the spoils and the rock that was sitting out there. His electrical and fire alarm roughens in Area A, first and second floors, 90%. He continues in Area B. And then he started electrical and fire alarm roughing in Area C gym the last couple of weeks. So a lot of work has progressed really in the last month. Want to scroll through the, look at some of the pictures. These pictures are probably from, maybe go a couple more pages. So there's a couple pictures of Area A or B and C. There's a good shot of Area, kind of in between Areas A and B, I think your old library where the framing, metal stud framing has been ongoing. That picture probably is a couple of weeks old at this point. Couple shots of, I think, the first floor, Area A with stud framing and drywall being topped off. That's a good picture of the, kind of the entry in Area A, duck work that's been installed up above. And you can kind of see the mezzanine steel that's built with the wood railing around it. That's complete, and you, that's passable now. The concrete was poured on that mezzanine, I think, last time I was here. There's a good shot of the drywall for one of the classrooms on the second floor. Just another couple. Starting the insulation in the walls and then drywall on top of that, and you see the duck work in the corridors. They painted the mechanical room, so that's painted and cleaned up. And picture of the kitchen. I do need to find that they're gonna pour that slab soon, but I don't think they've poured it yet. They had to put, I think, a footer in for one of the big beams for that span, the auditorium opening. And then a couple shots of some roof work that's completed up there. So all in all, the progress is kind of where we thought it would be. We had a good scheduled meeting about three weeks ago at this point, kind of drilled down on some activities. We'll do that again here later this month in early April with Lyicarius. But all in all, we're where we thought we'd be, some ahead, some a little behind, but no concerns there. There is one change order on the agenda that I can go over quickly for Lyicarius. It has two items. The first item on the change order actually resulted in a credit to the project. The food service consultant just modified a couple food service equipment pieces that resulted in a credit to the district. The second item on that change order, there was a error and omission with the size of an opening in Area A. So additional demolition had to occur, and a new steel beam had to be put in. So that was an add to Lyicarius. Overall, the total for this change order is a little bit over $1,000 for those two items. And then that's all I have for tonight. If there's any questions related to that or the progress or the change order summary, I can take those now.
Mr. Day, from the meetings I attend on Tuesday, I got the exact same feeling as you just explained, that in some areas were ahead of schedule. We're not really all that far behind on too much.
Correct.
And you were going to update the progress schedule. Is that still in, are you still planning on doing that?
Yes, that's, we had that meeting with Lyicarius and the group three weeks ago. Peter did update the schedule. We have it in hand, and it's better than it was. But we've shared it with our in-house PJ Dick's scheduling manager. So he's also taken a look at it to make sure it makes sense and how we updated it. So we're gonna do that again here in a couple of weeks and keep that person involved. Jake is his name. So he'll be part of that whole process just to maintain and monitor the schedule as the project goes.
Okay, and my last question is, we're still on schedule for December 2025?
Yes.
As completion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Sorry, I was gonna say, are there any other questions for the construction update?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Vice President, that concludes the superintendent report.
All right, thank you. Next up is citizens comments on agenda items. During this portion of the meeting, you may make comments about agenda items as written in district policy. All citizen comments are limited to three minutes. We request that your public comments focus on issues or policies and not people. Please state your name, community in which you reside, and the agenda item number you are addressing. And I don't have anybody on. So then solicitors report, Mr. Repack, do you have anything to share with the board?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. Two things. One, just to give an update, and I know superintendent's been keeping you abreast of the situation, but we are looking into the stormwater fee update for Allegheny Township. One of the things I think was good is I know the superintendent, maybe a board member, attended that meeting on Monday. They did table the position to try to get more information, which is good because they heard from the community. You know, we are looking into it. There is a case right now, Gateway School District, that we're trying to pull and get some information about how that's gonna settle out, whether or not they're gonna enforce it. You know, in the past, I have, you know, I want to be upfront that we have seen these implemented. They have been implemented on school districts and fire departments and police departments and everything of the like. So, you know, it's gonna be a difficult situation for the board to assess how that's going to impact you. But right now, I don't want to say that it's going to go through or not go through, but we did do an assessment, had our engineer look at it. It's about a million square feet of impervious acreage, what the district would have. You do get a reduction of about 50% because it's the work that you guys have done. So I know superintendent updated, we looked at that reducing the $20,000 fee to about $10,000 is what it would be.
Per year?
Per year, per year, correct.
That's just for this, what, more?
That's Allegheny Township. Yeah, it's just, just the reason.
So it's the ones that are intermediate in high school?
Yes, yeah, well, the parking lots and all of that would count towards that. But again, that's just in this township. We don't know what other townships are gonna do and how they're gonna look at it. But like I said, we're gonna monitor that. We're actually trying to get the ordinance itself so we can see the inner workings of, you know, what it's supposed to do is, they're using it so that they can stop this, you know, infiltration and things of that nature. So, you know, we're interested to see how that's gonna work. But I'm glad that, you know, they tabled it, and they're giving us an opportunity to kind of look at it from that standpoint. So any questions, let me know. But again, I think we have some time before they actually try to implement it. The second update, I did want to, again, I don't want to say there's a finished product, but I want to keep the board abreast of what's happening out in the community and federal government, state government. Some of the executive orders that have come down, specifically the one about PIA double A and how that transgendered students and that interaction, the executive order essentially keep men out of women's sports, that came down as an executive order. PIA double A accepted that executive order, saying this is going to be the action that PIA double A was going to accept. After that was released, we then had the ACLU and other institutions file suit against PIA double A. So again, we're gonna be monitoring that and hopefully have an answer as to, you know, what's gonna happen for next school term. But one of the things that we are seeing, you know, and again, you guys do this as a volunteer status, right, but the districts are the hotbed of litigation right now as it turns to whatever's gonna be happening. And we're seeing the districts are gonna be faced with a lot of these types of, you know, considerations, right? Whatever decision is going to be made, or whatever party, whatever side, doesn't really matter. It's just whatever's happening, it's happening here in the districts, and we're trying to work through that. So we'll again, keep you abreast of the situation, invest in our ability, and what happens right now. So we have held off, I know Ms. Kolikowski's been talking about those policies. We've kind of held off on some of those triggering policies for the districts until we really have an idea where this is gonna go. So, any questions?
So just a question out of curiosity.
Yeah.
So how can an organization file a suit against another organization if they're following an executive order?
So, I can answer, right, and that's kind of the controversial piece right now. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is interesting compared to other states because we have a few leases that went up to the Commonwealth Court and were decided, which has the law in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania where others do not. So they're trying to see whether or not that can be impacted because of those case law. And it came out of years ago. I've updated the board before about the Boyer Town case that happened. It may have been 2014 at this point in time. So that's, that's where the, you know, they're doing this again across the United States. I think the Commonwealth PA and some other states are a little unique because of the case law that I, surprisingly, was not appealed to the Supreme Court, which probably should have been, and it wasn't. So that's the law of the land right now in the Commonwealth. So that's, that's the, how do I say, the issue between those two parties. Any other questions? I hope to have an answer, so at least we know how to direct our administration principles and board come, come the new year. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, board and representative reports, Northern Westmoreland Career and Technology Center. Mrs. Snyder.
I have one quick thing. So earlier this year, the Culinary Program received its license to operate as a retail food establishment. The establishment with NWCTC is now open as the Culinary Corner. It's open to the public on Tuesdays. It started this month in March. Each week, they have different themes. Yesterday, the theme was Asian-inspired food. The cost to the public to go there to eat is $7. They're open from 11:00 AM to 1:00. Come check it out. I think it's a good thing for our students in the culinary department to serve, cook, do the works.
Thanks, sir.
And all the food that we've had's been excellent.
Yeah.
So, you know, firsthand, and then I do have something to add. So kudos again to Jason Hex for bringing in another grant for $147,259.48 for equipment. They're going to use the funding for an alignment lift for automotive technology, for trainers, electrical thermodynamic heat pumps for HVAC, and for a combi-therm oven, tilt skillet, and merchandiser for culinary arts. So he's done an amazing job, nothing short of amazing, about bringing in funds and using them to the best of our advantage for the kids and the school. It's really been nice to see. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next is the WIU, I'm report out next meeting. Then Pennsylvania School Board Legislative Council.
Nothing to say.
And then Kiskey Area Education Foundation, Dr. Halter can give us a report on Monday. Committee reports.
On the policy committee, we're trying to nail down a time plan in the month for regiving the 600 section policy, which affects a lot of the finance and the budgeting things in light of the, you know, yearly budget deadline. So it may need to be broken up into a couple of parts because it's pretty lengthy and involved. So we'll let everyone know and make an announcement for that and post it when we settle which date. That's all.
Any other committee reports? All right. Reports to the board. Does anybody have any questions on the reports that were presented to the boards in the minute? Communication, I'm sorry?
Yeah, can I go, are you talking about the school reports?
Yes.
Here's a couple items in here I think we should bring to attention. National Civics B finals, that's quite an achievement.
Really proud of it.
Yeah, so when is that? Is that this weekend? Or has that been?
It's April 8th.
Okay.
And that was Kalia Shavande, correct?
It was, yeah. She did a really nice job on the write-off, which is high-level carbon, equestrian. So take that on as a.
Knowing Kalia, that's fitting.
You know, there's items like that that kind of slip by me, and I have to read these reports a couple of times. And I don't know if there's a better way of presenting because, you know, there's a good example of one, academic, quite an achievement, words I can't even say or spell, you know, things like that. And I'm sure there's more here because I forgot to mark them off, and I got tied up in something else. But did I miss anybody? Is there any other ones like that in, in these reports that we should mention tonight? Nope? Okay, thank you, I'm done.
All right. Communication, Dr. Rowland, do we have any communication?
No communications.
Board business. Board business either, correct? All right, Dr. Rowland, would you please walk us through the agenda that will be asked to act on next Monday at our voting meeting?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We will be asking the board to vote on items under Personnel, 10.1 through 10.9, as presented on the agenda.
Any questions or discussion from the board regarding these items? Oh, I do have, I'm sorry, I do have a question. So 10.6 and 7. Is that, okay, so moving Julie to the, is she then gonna share dual roles of transportation and assisting, or maybe what's happening with all of that?
Need to replace transportation?
No, it, it will, she will be moving into that position that existed that was vacated by retirement.
Okay, and then is there going to be a future adoption for someone for transportation?
We will have to, we will have to make a future recommendation for replacement.
Okay, uh, let me see. And then was 10.7 also a retirement?
A retirement replacement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions for, on Personnel?
Okay, Madam Vice President, we will be asking the board to approve items under Finance, 11.1 to 11.3.
Are there any questions or discussion from the board regarding these items?
So this is pretty much like a have-to-move, right, because it's Skyward, it's just kind of phasing out of whatever that version was. And we're just not hearing the answer, so I might be have to ask him next week about some of these things. But, I mean, like, price-wise, I don't know what any of that means, if it's good, bad, as far as like what it was before or what we had to pay before for the, any of the migration to those systems. And as far as 11.2, have we not done anything like this before? Is this something new that we're doing that we've?
Yes.
As a need that has been identified?
Correct. This is very similar to the risk and vulnerability assessment that we have for physical security. This would be for our cybersecurity assessment, to be able to give us feedback on things that we need to do better, to better protect ourselves.
Okay, and does it put us in any better position for grant attainment for things?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not super sure about that, but I would imagine it would certainly help because you would have a third party basically recommending those changes.
Okay. And then, I don't think Mr. Vaughn's here tonight, but I think I also put the email into Dr. Lor to answer whenever he's feeling better. So it covers like the four weeks of monitoring, then what happens after that? Is there some kind of routine schedule that it has to be scanned as additional cost to that, or what kind of results from that? And again, you might not have the answer to that.
That would be a great question for Mr. Vaughn.
Okay.
Sure, we could get that answer to you for sure. And as far as the Skyward is concerned, there will be some costs to migrate over. The cost for cumulative, which is their new system, is generally this, a very similar cost anyhow. You know, there may be some increase, but we would know that as we migrate over.
I can say also, there's gonna be a time period where, because we're migrating in a whole new system, where we're actually, our data is backed up on two different systems. So there's an additional cost for that because we're still gonna be live in our system while we're migrating data into the new system. So that's one of the major costs that goes with this transition.
I just added, I was just asking, for what it's worth, I don't know if you guys did see, there was a giant Power School data breach that came out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, in December, end of December, yeah.
Yeah, well, you guys don't have Power School, but I'm assuming Skyward is this.
It is the student management, yep, correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah, on Skyward, Dr. Rowland, it will have more capabilities, if I remember right, than the old system?
Well, it's very, it's very much streamlined. I mean, they created a new system, obviously, because it's better, right? It's a lot more user-friendly. There are some other features and new features that they've seen as a need with SMS that they've embedded into cumulative. Cumulative has actually existed for the last five years, and they, they just didn't have a sunset date on SMS. And now they've announced the sunset date, which is pushing us into the transition over because once SMS sunsets, we wouldn't have access to a student management system. So we just need to get, and it takes about, you know, anywhere between 15 months and 24 months to really do the changeover because it is a lot of heavy lifting. And that's why we're, we have a team together across our district to make it, you know, some shared leadership in getting all the data cleaned up and getting it to be transferred over. But yeah, there are absolutely some benefits to the new system as it's a new system that's better, cleaner, it's more of a Windows model rather than a, you know, a real techie model, which is SMS.
Any other finance questions?
Okay, Madam Vice President, we would be asking the board to approve Legislation 12.1.
I do have a question about the calendar. Should I ask here or would it? I say throw it out just so everyone hears it though, too. So just a question, if the anticipated construction completion date is still December, what is that going to look like on the calendar? Is there gonna be changes at all? Are there tentative change, when will be moving the teachers back up, their students back up there? What should we plan for?
As, as we get closer to that situation where we know exactly when that will be available, we will be making planning and doing planning to be able to make a transition and make it make sense. We have some flexibility in the, in the schedule and the calendar, you know, through the state. And I, and I think we, you know, if we had to, we would take advantage of that. But it also can work out where we could take natural breaks that exist in that calendar to make the transition occur.
Hopefully not during the Christmas break. Sorry? Then hopefully not during the teacher's Christmas break.
Correct. And it really depends on when that date is where we can get the keys to the doors.
Any other questions on legislation?
Okay, Madam Vice President, we will be asking the board to accept, under the Items Bills, 13.1 to 13.3, as listed on the agenda.
Any questions or discussion on any of these items?
All right, Madam Vice President, we will be asking the board to accept Items 14.1 under Student Activities as presented on the agenda.
Any questions or discussion from the board?
And we will be asking the board to approve Items 15.1 under Curriculum and Professional Development.
Any questions from the board?
And, Madam Vice President, we will be asking the board to approve Item 16.1 as presented on the agenda under Construction.
And again, any questions or discussion from the board? All right, thank you, Dr. Rowland. Moving on to citizens comments on non-agenda items. The board welcomes comments of a general nature relating to school board business from residents, taxpayers, employees, and students of the district. Request that you limit your comments to three minutes. All other rules for engaging the board detailed in the earlier public comment period apply equally to this session. And we do not have anybody signed up for non-agenda items, but is there anybody here who would like to speak? Okay. Then we will move on to closing, directors comments. I'll start with you, Dawn.
Again, I'd like to shout out to Mark Gray, Mario Hutcherson, Cooper Roskowsky, Alyssa Tresko, and Ava Golding, which were our wrestling victory champions. Congratulations to the 25, 26 cheerleaders. Those have been decided. Winter Guard had another first place finish this past weekend. And I wanted to say that if anybody has the chance or the opportunity to volunteer with PTOs at different elementaries and schools, definitely do it. I know Amy and I last week worked a book fair at East, and it was pretty enjoyable to be able to work with the little kids picking out books and stuff. So if anybody, you know, has the opportunity, definitely do it. And again, just a reminder that there's still time to get your distinguished alumni submissions in. And that's about it for me.
Mrs. Kammer? I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Kolikowski?
Nothing.
I'll go to you.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mrs. Schneider?
Art shows, somebody help me here. When are art shows?
Next week.
Yeah, I thought that was on.
19th.
Arts is 19th.
19th, 18th.
18th at East.
And if I remember right, if you have two art teachers, they'll be at that art show on that night. Okay, great, great art. I've helped with a little bit of it, and it's great. Okay.
Mr. Sir. All right, and then I guess I go back to you. Do you have anything else in closing? No?
No one will give me that brick form. I just.
Oh, the brick form. Still, I don't have a brick form.
No one will give me that.
He's starting with a brick form.
No.
To get a brick.
I don't have one.
I used to, I'm sorry.
Well, you guys don't want me to buy one?
Mine's on my desk. I know it's on my desk. I just saw it.
That's all.
All right, thank you. And Dr. Rollin, anything?
I have nothing. Thank you very much.
All right, um, and I, uh, again, shout out to Kalia Shabondi. I did read that in those board reports, or, uh, school reports, and that's a big honor, so congrats to her. Good luck at States to all the swimmers. Musical, it's still time to get your tickets, get your tickets for next week. And congrats to the wrestlers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned.